Great. Could I have a motion to open the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, public meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals?
I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just to remind everybody, we will be implementing our procedural resolution tonight, which allows applicants ten minutes to speak, the public three minutes to speak, and additional time can be devoted at the discretion of the board. The next item is minutes. Does anyone have any? Did everyone get a chance to read the minutes? And are there any corrections?
No.
No.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty twenty-four meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And now we will move to bold business. And first, I will jet.
Jess?
Yes.
Do you know everybody's name?
I have everyone's name.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So now we will move to old business. And first on the agenda is forty-one Redwood Road and twenty-six Cove Road.
Good afternoon. My name is Dave Kosikoff. I'm with the law firm of Kosikoff and Cataldo.
Great.
I do actually. I could spell it, but it was everything.
And can you also just state your, the address for the record?
Sure. It's one seventy-five Pine Lawn Road. One seventy-five Pine Lawn Road, Suite one hundred, Melville, New York, one one seven four seven. I'm joined tonight by Tiffy Sciarlata, who together with me represents Mr. Manji Melli. I know names on this application are different and probably haven't been for some time, but it's Mr. Manji Melli's property that subject is discussed. And I too.
Well, just one notice, just so the public is aware, there were new drawings submitted this afternoon. So we will probably be leaving this open for adjournment, just so the public can review whatever the changes are that were made and/or might be closed for written.
Yeah, just to be clear, well, this is an exception, which is for anything public. There are no other plans that have been in GNA day on it.
Oh, okay.
And some photographs, so there weren't any substantive.
There, there now.
Just give this front cover page for the GNA back.
Okay, okay, great. All right, well, that's. Okay, now you may proceed.
No, thank you very much. It's not a long group, but we're going to point you to this as to know this matter before this support, probably starting in January two thousand and twenty-three. And I note from some of the submission by some of the artists in competition, they similarly, they similarly seem to be frustrated that process is taking too long. I'm not blaming anyone on this board. I understand that there have been modifications to address concerns that are made not only by the public, but by the board itself. Just going to point out a couple of things, and then I'm joined by Craig Arm, who is the architect, and I know Craig's going to discuss briefly some of the issues with the, with the project. And also, I note that Ms. Sciarlata has submitted a memorandum, which really provides you with all of the legal obligations that I know you're aware of when it comes to reviewing this application. But a few things. First of all, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine square feet of permitted GFA. This has two thousand four hundred and sixty-six, so we are well within the permissible amount of space. The building could, is fairly modest. It's only one thousand four hundred and seventy-six square feet. And in many respects, we are seeking just the minimum variances. I also note that there are some issues having to do with the fact that, you know, we're, we're subject to the New York State EDC requirements, that there was a sixty-five foot covenant to buffer to the wetlands line. So that sort of impacted our ability to place the property. And it also, we're not proposing any accessory garage or structures at all for this, for this, for any other person, for any other purpose, rather. So really, we have just the structure itself. And of course, as, as this tribunal is aware, really, just about every property in this area, because of the odd sizes, they don't need to have various requirement type. But we're not, we're not asking for any special favors that any other people haven't received. I'd like to ask Mr. Arm to discuss some of the comparisons between this property and some of the neighboring properties that suggest that we're seeking really similar treatments. Have you actually trouble with the documents, I assume?
I'm just trying to screen share. Okay. There we go. Okay. All right. Hi, everyone. Craig Arm from Dear Coskian Arm in West Hampton Beach. As mentioned, we did do some comparisons regarding forty-one Redwood to, we had some studies kind of showing the whole character of the area, but specifically did some comparisons to eighty Redwood Road as well as twenty, twenty-two Cove Road. I'll start with, with twenty-two Cove Road, which is the immediate neighbor. Just to kind of give an idea for, for character and for other variances that have been granted to allow the houses. So, so in doing some comparisons, the lot sizes of a forty-one to twenty-two, forty-one Redwood is actually slightly larger, of twelve thousand one hundred fifteen square feet to eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-five square feet. We do have a little bit larger upland area. And then we do not, we're not limited by a bluff where twenty-two Cove was. For street frontage, we have approximately a hundred and eighty-two lineal feet, where twenty-two Cove has one hundred. So there's a lot of similar things. We're obviously wider for the piece of property. I know there's been some concern early on about the width of the house. So just to address that, we are a much wider lot, and yet our house is slightly wider, but not wider when you consider the house and the pool and the fence for the total lot width and percentage-wise is certainly much less. But going back to the building coverage and upland area, so for what we're proposing at forty-one Redwood, we're at twenty-two point eight five percent proposed. Where twenty-two Cove is at fourteen point four five percent. Building coverage itself, it, that equates to one thousand four hundred and seventy-six square feet to one thousand five hundred and ninety-five square feet. The total upland coverage is thirteen point nine five percent, as opposed to seventeen point seven five percent for a total of sixteen hundred and three versus nineteen hundred, one thousand nine hundred and forty square feet. The setbacks do vary, where, as mentioned, the Cove Road property has a bluff setback of twenty-five. They have fifty-three feet to the wetlands for the house and fifty-two to the pool. We're locked in at sixty-five feet as required by DEC. With that, the average depth of the lot, which was taken in a few different places, because our lots are regular in shape, we are significantly less in terms of the depth to wetlands. We average ninety-five feet, eight inches, as opposed to a hundred and ten feet, eight inches. So while the next things, we were talking about a front yard setback, we have a minimum of sixteen point two, as opposed to twenty-one as the minimum, with averages of twenty-one point two nine and twenty-three point four three respectively. You'll also see that based on our distance from the wetlands, which is greater, as well as the overall depth of the lot to wetland, which is much less. Really, we're, we're very tight. We're, we're right in there with everything in terms of not asking for any more, by all means, than, than where the neighbors would be percentage-wise. Overall building envelope, if you were to take the building envelope of forty-one Redwood with a sixty-five foot wetland setback, a thirty-foot front yard and fifteen-foot side yards, we would have eight hundred and six square feet. If you did the same comparison to, to red, to, sorry, twenty-two Cove, they would only have four hundred and eighty-five square feet. So in terms of people concerned that the house is too big for the lot, if things were equal with required setbacks from DEC, we're much more in conformance than the neighboring lot would have been. Additionally, in terms of the gross floor areas, our first floor area is one thousand four hundred and twenty-three square feet, which includes some mechanical space. The Cove Road property does not have, they have a full basement, so they do not have mechanical space. So we are a little bit larger, but by the time you do the, you take out the mechanical, we're actually very close. The same thing applies to the second floor. We're at twelve ninety-five, as opposed to the twelve eighty-seven. And once again, we have some mechanical space that would come out as well. So all, all said and done, by the time we're, we're done, we're, we're really very close in, in size. We are less percentages of our GFA being used. We are less on lot coverage. And we're fairly close in terms of with the, the setbacks of what's being, of what we're being at, what we're asking for. In terms of another comparison for forty-one Redwood to eighty Redwood, which was a variance that was recently granted, forty-one Redwood is a significantly smaller lot. The upland area is, is smaller, but the percentages are, are not as great as based on the lot size differences. The street frontages, as I said, are quite a bit different, where the street frontage of forty-one Redwood is just about a hundred feet wider. Going into lot coverage of upland area, where forty-one Redwood is significantly smaller in terms of percentages of what's being applied for. Total coverage is less, upland area is less. Quite a big difference. The, the wetland setback, we're red, forty-one Redwood, sixty-five feet. Eighty Redwood is seventy-five point four for the pool and eighty-six point five for the house. And I wanted to mention with the pool, so they were the standard seventy-five foot setback. But because they included a pool and patios and, and additional structures, the board still granted a variance of the front yard of the house going to twenty feet, along with a stoop that went beyond that with the roof as well. So while we are closer, when you take into consideration the percentage of property they've been built on, the square footage of the coverage, as well as the setbacks and the fact that they have the pool, quite, quite different in terms of the percentages over. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of differences in terms of with average setbacks and the closest setbacks where things, I think, start telling a better picture. And then there's the building with, once again, just for comparison, where seventy-three feet, four versus fifty-two feet, one inches. But when you take into consideration that the building with forty-one Redwood's almost a hundred feet wider, I certainly don't think, based on the size of the house, it's not in keeping with, with other houses that have been done. So in terms of the board's granting a, if you compare the, the buildable, building envelopes of the sixty-five feet for the wetland setback versus seventy-five, the difference of the allowable building envelopes are significant, where forty-one Redwood is significantly smaller, but yet the variances were still granted for front yard for, for the eighty Redwood as well. So in terms of first floor area, there are a larger house. They have some mechanical space, as do we. Our second floor is close. So even though they're a bigger house, we're actually not that much smaller. But it is, it does get a fair amount, once you take into the, you know, the GFA with the, with the mechanical space removed. And, and one thing, just on the GFAs, where I know there were some discussions on some of the discrepancies with the GFAs. In the past, we had always discussed GFA as it was referred to in section two eighty-five of the code, which is the wetland section. On the new submitted cover sheet, we actually show what it is for the two, two eighty-five section, as well as the three hundred zoning section. So you could, all of the, the things in the comparison that are being shown are based on the zoning setbacks. And depending on which way was, you wanted to interpret the code, be it the section two eighty-five or three hundred, would make a difference, just for why I listed both of them on the cover sheet, just for the ongoing consistency, but also for comparison. And I think that's the, the main things we wanted to, to point out was just some of the differences with the properties, but also a lot of the similarities of the properties and how for two properties that were both granted variances, they're certainly not in keeping with in what we're trying to do over at forty-one Redwood. Yes, there are some differences, but I think there's kind of pluses and minuses to all the properties.
Thank you, Craig. And I just want to point out two more things, and then I'll sit down. I mean, you have the memorandum that Ms. Sciarlata presented. So she gave you comprehensive discussion about New York State Building Law, Section seven, Def seven, one, two, nine, such, section eight. So those are the five requirements that, that you're, to, to review and address in your determination. The other thing that she points out in the memorandum are other applications that have been reviewed and granted by this board. I refer you to page eight nine from the memorandum, where she refers to fifteen Bluff Point Lane LLC Waterfront Lot, seven Cornell, twenty Cove Road, fifty-six Redwood Road, and eighty-eight Redwood Road of LRT, and eighty Redwood Road. So these, these are other examples of how this board has treated similar applications. So unless you have any questions, I will, I'll stand up.
Any board, do you have a question?
Yeah. Do you have the comparables with twenty-two Cove Road and eighty Redwood Road in terms of their elevation above sea level compared to forty-one?
So in terms of the FEMA regulation, so eight, twenty-two Cove is in an X zone. So I don't have the exact, without referencing, I don't have the exact elevation of the floors, but they're in FEMA X zone, where we are not. And also eighty Redwood, I believe that is in an X zone as well. But they did elevate most of the house to.
I'm not asking FEMA standards. I'm asking, what is the elevation from sea level? Or, or if you don't have it for the other two, do you have it for forty-one Redwood Road?
Forty-one Redwood Road, the elevation from sea level. Okay.
I mean, it looks to be two or three feet. Would you agree with that?
I, I'm sorry, elevation from, oh, the sea level elevation?
For the water. There's water in the back of all these properties.
Correct. So where our grade is roughly elevation eight, give or take. So say in terms of like, we're about five feet.
It doesn't look like.
Your grade can't be the property.
The, the floor of the house is eight, your grade.
I'm sorry. Yes, you're, you're correct. So the, the grade of the house varies, I'm sorry. So from five point three, six point four. Some of the grade is eight, nine, ten. It does slope. Six is sort of a line that runs in and out. So I, I would say six is probably the average grade.
Okay. It doesn't look like it to me as I walk the property, but.
So you don't have those comparables to twenty-two?
It is on this, it's on the survey, the, the contour lines, the, the contour lines.
Yeah. We have the.
And two other quick questions. Do you know the date of construction for twenty-two Cove Road and eighty Redwood Road?
So.
Otherwise, when those grant, variances were granted, those were pre-existing, non-conforming structures that were in place.
Well, there was on Cove Road.
Right.
I, I don't know if you remember that, but that was the case.
Twenty-two Cove.
There was a house there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yes. I mean, but that goes way back, that house.
Twenty.
One thing that is not comparable is that there were.
There were houses there.
Structures on both those properties.
Yeah.
There was, there's never been, in the history of Redwood, a structure on this property.
But understood, understood. The twenty-two Cove, I, I do know from reading through some of the, the paperwork that I believe that was substantially reconstructed to the point that it was considered a new building from the building inspector, because I believe they had a stop work order, if I'm not mistaken, and had to go back in front of the board. And from what I could see going through the files, perhaps there was a, a house at eighty Redwood at some point, but these variances were granted from a vacant lot. There was no house, I don't believe, there at the time when they, when that was done. So whether there was something there prior is possible, but I believe reading through the, the variances and the surveys that were in the file that I was presented, show that it was vacant land.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just related to Tim's question, and I guess we've asked this before, is, but what is the first floor elevation? Eight?
Where?
Did say it somewhere?
On the survey.
On the survey? Okay. It's not on their drawings.
It should be on the cross-section page.
Okay, yes, I see it here.
Yeah, where finished floor was elevation eight.
Okay, great. Does anyone else? Damon, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. Any other board members with questions at the moment?
No questions.
Okay. Do you have, is Tiffany good to speak, or are you done?
We're, we're good.
Okay, great. So, thank you. So I'll open it up to the public. Are there members from the public that would like to speak? Hi. Couldn't you just state your name and address for the record?
Oh, excuse me. John Hart. So obviously, we've been here before, entering one process. The house, I think, for tonight, it's a phase off of the house that appeared before me two months ago. In December of twenty twenty-three, you voted out, and it was too big, and you'd like to come back with a bigger smaller. They have not come back with a bigger smaller. But I, for the year, in the, I guess, file arguments, which was that you should approve this house because it's similar to the house next door. The board has just correctly pointed out that the approvals that were issued approximately eighteen years ago for the house next door were issued to replace a house that was already there. And it was deemed that the new house was going to be better for the character of community and the environment than the existing house. It's not comparable to a vacant piece of property where you want to build a house, which, by the way, is bigger and longer than the one they're comparing it to. The, the issue before this board is not anything other than the enormous front yard variances that they're asking for. And they have not listened to the board for eighteen months. They have come back to you with the exact same test house. And it's essentially the exact same variance request, other than that, they also say we've settled over the last eighteen months.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Anyone on, oh, yes. Hi, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Dominic Lapierre, two hundred Madison Street.
Great. Have you spoken before?
On this issue?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Are you an attorney?
No.
Can you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. You may proceed. Okay.
I was not familiar with the concept of average setback.
No, it's really, that's just for their argument. They're just arguing that the board should consider that the average setback is larger than what they actually have to grant in terms of variance. The board actually has to find that the five-part test applies to the variance that applies and is requested. They can consider that as part of their argument. They're determined, whatever they're determined, but.
That doesn't exist as a concept.
It's not, it's not a variance being granted, granted just to the actual setback, the smallest setback.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else with any comments? Questions? Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Do you have any rebuttal? You want, do you have anything to add?
No, we'll stand by our submission. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, um, how are, any comments from the board members?
No.
On the record.
Why don't we close the public hearing first? I'll put a lot on the record when it's.
Okay, okay.
We discussing.
Well, we can either close, close this and discuss, or we can do some discussion now and then close it.
Let's discuss.
Before we close it.
Or.
I'd like to close, close the meeting, so we don't have to argue back and forth over our opinions.
Okay.
All right.
Is that amenable to everyone on the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. So could I have a motion to close the public hearing for forty-one Redwood Road, twenty-six Cove Road?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So, Tim, want to start?
Well, I just, to start off with, we have been talking about this for eighteen months, and we basically have the same house that's presented to us. It's one of the lowest lots elevation-wise to sea level of any in Redwood. It's subject to flooding. And I think if anything is going to be built there, and it's arguable, in my opinion, whether anything should be built there, whether it should instead be preserved as open land. But it should be something much smaller, if something is going to be built there.
It can be built on. It's the same as our reply.
I understand. To go through the five points, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. It is the entry into the Redwood neighborhood, and we've heard a lot of comments on the character of the house. People feel that it's not a desirable entry structure to that neighborhood. Whether the benefits up by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant. Well, I suppose that's in the opinion of the applicant, but we've been suggesting for eighteen months that they come to us with a smaller structure. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's double what's allowed in terms of the setback from the street. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood or district. I, as I said earlier, this property is so low. I, as I said earlier, uh, this property is so low elevation-wise that if you walk the property, uh, you know, you you get your feet wet, and I think in terms of the environment, it's going to add to the flooding in that area that already exists. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Uh, no, of course it is. It's a vacant piece of land, so by definition, it's self-created. And um, the applicant is not really a back uh, with a more modest structure. So for those five reasons, those are the problems that I have with this application.
Great, thank you. Uh, Val, do you wanna weigh in?
I would um, add to the comments because these are two of the very few vacant remaining parcels on this property. By themselves, they're combined, so you can build a house on the lot. You dig down eighteen inches and you're into water. But it's not our concern. It's more or less the setback and the five parts that Tim went through. Um, two meetings back, I pointed out about the character of the neighborhood in terms of this being pre-existing. Mainly one-story houses built in the nineteen thirties. There were very few since that time vacant parcels. Um, and over the course of time, example, twenty two Cove Road was not a brand-new house, but in addition to a house. The applicant is using this particular home as the uh, the basis of the the merits of their house. So if we took a look at the physical characteristic, twenty two Cove Road has a fourteen-foot setback uh, from the edge of pavement. And as you go around the bend into Redwood, it turns into zero. There's no setback in the pavement, no pedestrian safety. This room is eighteen foot wide. And that's exactly what the applicant is looking for in terms of variance. So you're looking at it, edge of pavement to that wall, a two-story house, seems like a lot to ask. We've asked them to come back with smaller, and they could. Even the designer of this project tonight said that it could have been eight hundred square feet. Well, why not present that? Why not reduce your variance where there is no distance in terms of edge of pavement? There's nothing. In turn, most village properties have ten, twelve, fifteen feet of lawn, and then the lot line. This has zero. It's a prime pedestrian access as you come into Redwood in terms of character of the neighborhood. It's a walking neighborhood. Even the contract then did for this said that he walked the neighborhood. You can't walk this neighborhood without lawn trucks coming around. There's children walking here. There's kids on their bikes. There's no room for some pedestrian safety as you come around this building. In terms of buildability, um, again, you can't look at the pre-existing non-conforming houses. Section three hundred four point one of our code. The R twenty-one family resident district is to be the principal resident district in the village. As a result of the village's long development history, it is anticipated that there may be some non-conforming residences and non-presidents useless. That's the whole history of Redwood. In the nineteen thirties, these houses were built on, added on to, and minor variance was granted. There's four case studies here that came from the applicant. It's almost meaningless. It's landscape features and steps. There's no brand-new house. What could happen, and my fear is that some of these houses are so old that if they get torn down, we've got a precedent here for, again, this room is eighteen feet wide. That's not enough. And you're gonna open the door for more people to say, well, the board gave eighteen feet. There's no mitigating circumstance to say, well, they did their best. You came in with the largest possible house, and it was taken back, but marginal, the the decrease. So in terms of what's been presented, um, I believe that this can be made smaller. And it does change the character of the neighborhood. And it's something that the applicant spent a lot of time looking at property, cherry-picking each property to say that there's a certain distance from the road. And again, the point is, they're pre-existing houses that some of them have ten, twelve, fourteen feet of lawn from edge of pavement to the lot line. And that's the distinction. This property has zero. As you come around the bend, it's a primary entry to Redwood. It's the gateway to Redwood. And I I find that that is uh, there's a big ask. Again, eighteen feet in this uh, dimension is too tight.
Great, thank you. Um, I I'll just add on to the comments, and it mostly goes to character. I think that, from my opinion, the width and the two-story height of the house being so close to the street, especially on that curve, is it's just gonna appear quite massive. Um, I also think that because we're, even though it's been adjusted to some degree, we're still at almost fifty percent of the first floor and the second floor being non-conforming. So those are the main sticking points for me. Pam, do you have anything?
Well, we, you both basically reiterated the same thing that we've been saying, that the house was too large, and they had made some changes and comparing the two. And I think if they took the time and effort of doing what they've proposed to us to make it smaller, it would be uh, the thing to do, but they continually do the same thing.
Great, thank you. Damon, do you have anything to add?
Uh, not really anything to add because it's been so eloquently said, but, you know, to to be blunt, the house is too big. We've asked uh, for the house to be reduced in size. There've been some very miniscule changes to it, and it's it's still too big. Um, and the biggest issue is that, you know, you're asking for too large of a setback variance. It's, again, I don't want to set precedent. I don't think anyone on the board wants to set precedent for that.
Great, thank you. Alex isn't on Zoom. Okay. Great. So um, do we, it sounds like it's a negative, um, I don't know if we need to do it, do I have to strapple? I guess you're no.
No, no.
Everybody's basically. No?
No.
Okay.
No.
No, no. And Damon, you're basically.
And I'm, yeah.
So, um, so I guess we'll, can I have a motion to our direct, our attorney to write a just, a negative decision for forty one Redwood Road, forty two Cove Road, I mean, twenty six Cove Road, I'm sorry. Forty one Redwood Road and twenty six Cove Road.
I'll make a motion to instruct our attorney, Dusty.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you. Great, thank you. So next on the agenda is, uh, we have a few adjournments. Next on the agenda is sixty-three Main Street, and they've requested an adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn sixty-three Main Street to the, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
So move.
October fifteenth.
Oc- October, October fifteenth meeting?
So move.
On, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Uh, next, we have two oh three Madison Street, which is also requested in adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn twenty, uh, two oh three Madison Street to the October fifteenth meeting?
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
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 Next on the agenda is one fifty-two Division Street. Could I have a motion to adjourn one fifty-two Division Street to the October fifteenth meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Now we are at new business. And first on the agenda is fifty-seven Palmer Terrace. And the tax map number is nine oh three dash six dash one dash fifty-seven.
No, I haven't made a motion yet.
Did I have a motion to open the public hearing for fifty-seven Palmer Terrace?
I'll make a motion to open.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you state your name and address for the record?
Tiffany Scorallato, thirty-six West Quarter Street, Suite Two, St. Harbor, for the applicant. Um, I do have good news on the topic, Julian Rick porch as well as the architect. There's a case where it has is a person who will be able to answer.
Do you, do you want them to speak, or do you want to, so swear them in now, or do you want to just wait?
I'll just wait in case. I feel like the architect is going to leave him too.
Can I make a comment, please? All these plans says Kyle, is it Kyle Ruth?
Kyle.
Design. You can't introduce to the board people who are architects unless they actually are architects.
I apologize.
It is actually a violation of New York State law in terms of representation. No one can use that title.
Architect. I apologize. But I even ought to take this.
You cannot use that term, sir. Look it up. You cannot. Look up the law.
I I have something to say. Um, I didn't have the opportunity to review the property because when I did go to the property, there were people there who told me they did not know I was coming. I was, I was not able to go outside or inside, and this has happened numerous times. It's the responsibility of the people who, of who own the property to let people know that the zoning board will be coming. And they told me that they may come back, and this has happened to me on numerous occasions. It's happened to me on uh, Zach Harper Hills Road. It's, it's.
They signed a um, form allowing you to.
I I didn't see the form.
They will send back. We can make it more prominent to applicants so that they understand what they're signing, and maybe it's a little.
I mean, I I knocked on the door, and someone came and told me that.
This happens a lot.
And it happens. And one more thing.
Yeah.
I'm going on knocking on doors, and I don't have anything that indicates. I have a piece of paper, and I say I'm Hannah Willoughby, and I'm coming to a review. And I've had a number of people who have said to me, uh, what are you doing here? I don't know you're supposed to come here. And I've asked for that we get badges of some, something that identifies us when we come to the door.
I think that's a great suggestion. It is.
Thank you.
Yes. So we'll follow up with that. And we'll make sure that applicants understand, uh, which they have an authorization signed right here for this application. But maybe the applicants and property owners themselves, and sometimes as tenants, we need to make it clear.
That's what, usually it's tenants that don't understand. The owners know, but the tenants don't know, yeah, sometimes.
I understand that, but this is not, this has happened uh, on numerous occasions, and.
I'm, I'm less polite.
And then the first thing I listen to hear is, there's a dog. Because going into a backyard and all of a sudden, a dog comes driving out.
Anyway, Tiffany, sorry. You may proceed. Uh, yes.
So this is, if you have a ready proposal, um, for two areas, two areas, so hopefully. Three on one, I'm gonna say four. Um, so I'm located on the corner of Palmer Terrace and Jermaine Avenue. And the lot is triple, three, four, five, thirteen, thirteen square feet. Uh, it's a sort of second-story addition to be located in eighteen point one feet from the front yard lot line, and that would be on Jermaine Avenue side, or twenty feet is required. Twenty feet from the rear yard lot line facing the premises offered by the South County Water Authority. Where thirty feet is required, necessitating a ten-foot variance and a skyplanting variance in the amount of ninety-four point five cubic feet. Um, as well as an expansion of a non-conforming asset that's beyond fifty percent of the GFA. Right now, the house sits in, I believe, five, five or so cubic feet impairment in violation of the requirement. And sits in violation of both setbacks, front yard and rear yard setbacks from Jermaine Avenue and the South County Water Authority. Um, the lot is non-conforming. It's a lot width, has an average width of ninety-four three, where ninety-four feet where a hundred is required and is fifteen thousand square feet where twenty thousand is required. It's currently improved to the one and a half story, twelve hundred and seventy-four square foot residence, slate patio, swimming pool and pool house. Uh, the existing residence is non-conforming to dimensional requirements, eleven point two feet from the front yard of Jermaine Avenue, from the front yard lot line, which is like from the side of the house on Jermaine Avenue. This is in violation of the skyplanting in the amount of five point two cubic feet. The surrounding home sits in primarily a two and, two and a half story residences with accessory structures on siloed, oversized lots. Um, I don't know if the board has any questions with respect to the proposal. It is within GFA and meets all other requirements. I have submitted the amendment for, as we expect to the property.
Great. The only problem, I think, with the project is that, um, it's a contributing house, and I'll just read from the, um, our United States Department of the Interior National Park Service, um, registry. Um, and it describes the property as a one and one-half story, three-bay framed residence with altered fenestration, including a picture window and asbestos shingle wall cladding. Although altered, this simple house retained, retained its roof profile and historic proportions. So if you add.
Contributing structure.
It's a contributing.
It's landmark.
It's landmark. So if you add a second.
Landmark is a whole different.
Well, no, no, no. It's part of the, this is, it's part of.
Do you like a copy?
Yeah, I can give you, I made one for you. Yeah, um, if you add on to the second floor, you've removed it from the registry. And we've just gone through two projects recently, one at the end of Howard Street, where the Architecture Review Board would not allow them to build over the existing house, and one on the corner of uh, Madison and, uh, what it's, is it Union that goes across? It was just that little house that Anthony Vermandelaj just did.
Right.
They, he was denied adding on to a second floor to that, and they had to add on to the rear to maintain the character of the house. So.
You know.
So.
Say, not change.
Yeah. Well, I was just gonna say, so what I would request is that you go to the Airbnb and have, um, the, um, historic president, well, as a discussion, I would also have the, um, the, the consultant, the historic preservation consultant, maybe do a review of the house to determine whether or not they still feel that it's, um.
It has been renovated by the new owners who had a completely, right renovation. They've replaced everything in the house.
Right.
So I have.
But this has mostly.
A lot of that historic.
Right. Except that they do call out the proportions, and once you add a second floor, the proportions are gone. So it's, it's not our board's um, purview to decide that. That's the Arch, the Architecture Review Board. So before we make any decision, I think we need to have a report from them.
I think that's appropriate. Um, the one other thing that I would say in terms of this board and relief required for this board is that we do have the option of adding on to the front of the house on Palmer Terrace side without any additional variances.
Right.
Obviously, that would change the roof line. But we did think that that would change the sort of pastoral landscape. There are larger front yards.
Right.
Matthew Chef from Jermaine Avenue.
Down.
From the cemetery down, there's larger front yards. And the idea was to try to keep that and retain the existing residence.
Right.
That.
So that, again, is, is a consideration for the Architecture Review Board, whether or not they want to maintain those two elevations as they are in that view down. Because most of those houses are set way back with large front yards. Um, I don't know if any of the other members of the board have comments?
Need it be appropriate for us to provide feedback so?
Would it be appropriate for us to provide feedback so that they have a sense of where the board is?
Um, now, I mean, we can.
Advance of that?
We can. Um, what's happened in the past is that the Architecture Review Board has just said no.
How far we get the the feedback from you guys until we have some feedback from the ARB because that variable change.
They're just.
Well, I just meant it would give you some sense of if the board had some serious problem with it.
We can, we can do that.
Maybe you would know that now, or if nobody has any serious problem with it, if it would be helpful, we could have a discussion.
Sure. Why don't you, do you have, do you have comments?
Well, I was, my thought was the the historical and architectural nature of the house aside, that the addition is staying within the same footprint. And so most of the the, uh, the variances that are needed apply to the existing house.
Right.
Doesn't significantly change. I think there's just a, there's a bump out in the back. But otherwise it's staying within the footprint of the house. That kind of mitigates um, the size of these variances that would be required, at least in my mind.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I.
Meaning I'm basically pretty positive.
Right. I mean, I agree.
Historical thing aside.
Right. Aside from the historic nature of the problem, I, the variances seem reasonable to me. I'm allowed. Do you have comments?
The, I served with the ARB for many years before. And every house is investigated as the application comes up within the historic difference. So we answer to the Secretary of the Interior in terms of oh, how's it dealt with in terms of an addition, which is greater than fifty percent of the existing home? And our code book makes mention that we don't do anything to if a house is to be renovated, that it won't harm its designation as a historic home. So the addition as it stands, it feels too ambitious in terms of enveloping this entire house where you cannot see the fact that the, it's historic. I mean, it's a one story cottage and there's enough property that you can put an addition onto this house with something that leaves it distinct as it was. So you don't interrupt the history of the home. And I feel that's what the fifty percent rule is for, to help create the, um, the first hurdle to some degree before it goes to ARB board. And those are my comments. I mean, you cannot touch historic houses and this one dates back circa nineteen hundred. So if an addition can be figured out where it doesn't harm the character or designation of this house, I would support that.
Just anecdotally, I had a project with a house like this. The board, the Architecture Review Board wouldn't even allow us to put a French door in the house. And this house dated back to the nineteen thirties. We were allowed to add on to the rear end, but we had to, we couldn't, we had to be lower. And it had to be a distinct attachment to the house. The integrity of the house had to be maintained, um, because it was a contributing house and they do, as Vale said, they don't want it, you to disguise the, um, the character of the existing house because then it no longer is contributing. So.
An addition in the front that may.
Well, that's.
Entire historic.
That may become a problem.
Well, that's interesting to point that out because this address here had formerly been a, uh, Jermaine Avenue address. And it was changed so that the front of this house does face Jermaine, even though it has a Palmer Terrace address. So that.
I'm trying to think of the house facade and I, I do remember there is a door run right hand side.
Right. But it it did at one time, it was referred to as a Jermaine Avenue address.
Ninety four Jermaine Avenue.
That's right. There is a house on Palmer that's one story. It's a hip roof house on the opposite side of the street. A little bit down.
Newly finished?
Yes. It's, it was newly constructed. It was proposed during the pandemic. And it's historic and the additions which were proposed to that house were primarily one story to the rear of the house. And it did not hurt the historic designation. So I think that that's a better direction to take and, um, something which I still would feel very strongly. We're here to preserve and protect these old houses and unfortunately, um, it it is historic.
Well, it may or may not. It's the exterior.
It's in the book and I've worked on houses as Scott is, you know, I'm an architect as well. I've worked on many homes in the village years back. And they cannot be, um, harmed to the point where you cannot tell that that was the historic house. Look at that top left drawing and the cross section of this two story ranch style addition. Buried that house. And it's unrecognizable in terms of its historic character and quality. It's gone.
Great. Do you have anything else to add? Okay. Thank you, Tiffany. No, we're gonna, we'll open it up to the public to see if there's any public comment. Um, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to fifty seven Palmer Terrace? Hi, can you state your name and address for the record?
Dominic Clapp here, two hundred and seventy six.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. You, you may proceed.
I love this property. I drive by it like many of you. I know, five times a day when the kids are going to school. Um, and one thing that I've always been impressed by is its longevity. Personally, as an architect like Val, um, I've always wondered why no one's actually identified it. I've seen work done over the years, specifically I believe the septic system is going to install. Um, and previously it had been problem with the flooding, which I haven't seen lately. Considering we have any rains recently, hence any flooding. Or maybe twenty four months ago, um, was the most recent. Um, I reckon, I encourage you to follow up on some of Val's, um, standing up on his level. I personally would love to see a somewhat different addition to this house in the yard that may be on the Palmer Terrace. And I'd encourage see if that comes to fruition, something that maintains the existing mass, history of the existing property while leaving the owner and the architect and the design team to come up something really novel at that corner.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes. Uh, can you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Richard Gorge and I'm the owner of the property fifty seven Palmer Terrace.
Great. And are you an attorney?
I am not.
Okay. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great. Thank you.
So, um, so we had, you know, considered expanding the property. And, uh, we do have, and I'm no architect and no experts, like for, to be experts, but we have a building envelope that goes to the side of the property. But when we explored sort of expanding in that direction, uh, it appeared that that expansion would have to kind of be set back. Septic is, and it would be kind of this disjointed sort of a thing. It wouldn't be just a straight across branch, which in my opinion doesn't really fit in the character of the neighborhood. But it would be kind of the original house and then sort of setback and then kind of the addition. And so it just seems like going into that building envelope would make, I think it would, I think it would look terrible. And I think it would look very disjointed. To us, kind of just going straight above seemed like, uh, kind of a good, a good option since it's sort of using the same footprint. So I just wanted to point out that kind of expanding that direction is challenging and that it appeared that the addition would have to go back and then expand out.
Great. Thank you. The main problem is though that it is a, it is what it is and it's, it's contributing to the historic district. So once you add on to the top of it, it no longer is contributing because it's not, there's no, no, nothing remaining of the historic structure. That's, that's the crux of the problem.
Well, I, I just sort of bring this up as kind of rebuttal to the question of a different vision and kind of expanding into an area where you can expand. Just to sort of point out that expanding into that area is awkward and it may not visually and sort of, sort of appeal. Uh, it's not a real, it's clearly defined sort of way to go.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
For you don't have two rear yards. I want to point out one comment, which should be brought up to the building inspector. When a corner lot, it's up to interpretation. But the rear yard is typically, or can be opposite the short front. So therefore to the, the pool side of this property, that may not be a rear yard and that could offer more real estate. But you have from the setback line to the existing house, roughly sixty eight feet, which is a lot to work with. And within that real estate, I think something reasonable can be done to set it back, although it has the Palmer Terrace address. You know, you, there are houses in the village on corner lots which speak to both streets. And that would hearken back to what we have testimony from another resident in the village, Athens, the architect, that we like to preserve the character of these and that there's a scale, there's a cadence of houses as you go down the streets. And as you travel Jermaine, there's small scale houses. As you go down what was known as Hunting's Hill before it became Palmer's Terrace, very large estate like houses on that hill. And you feel that your architectural reference, you know, hearkens to that to some degree. But this speaks to a different streetscape. And that's why not only protecting the house, but the volume of the additions, you know, keep that, you can work. There's a lot of room here. Your building envelope is actually larger than some parcels in this village and that'll give you latitude. I'm sorry to take a strong stance on this, but that's what we're here for too. It's not just zoning. We're also a mechanism that protects and preserves these old houses. And it's unfortunate that you didn't know because your default reaction is stack on top of this house is a practical solution to making an addition, but not on a historic home. We tend to not disturb that. So, um, that's all I have to add.
Great. Thank, thank you. Uh, is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
No. Tiffany, do you have something to add?
No.
Okay.
You table the.
Yes. So could I have a motion to adjourn, uh, fifty seven Palmer Terrace to the October fifteenth meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is thirty seven John Street. Hello. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Catherine Bowers, Clay from Cleveland, D.C. I'm the owner of thirty seven John Street.
Great. Can you raise your right hand? You're on it. Oh my, congratulations.
Thank you. Um, I'm here on behalf of the owner of thirty seven John Street, speaking of variance for a pool and an accessory structure, part of which the structure is located in the front yard. Um, the lot is twenty seven and is there. Most of the structure will be located in the side yard. They are drawn and exclusive. They tend to the primary structure and other other structure along the premises. It is a corner lot that's easy subject to front yard. Uh, we do not believe an undesirable change will, uh, be produced by the cracky all of the variations. Um, as you can see, both the pool at the end of the front yard, uh, meeting the front yard setbacks actually exceed seven forty feet from the front yard. Um, the benefit thought it would be difficult to achieve in that way because of the current insistence after the premises and again the two front yard. We don't think it's substantial because both of them are setback forty feet from Columbia Street. Um, we also don't think there's going to be any adverse impact on the environment. We're not seeking any coverage variances from everything else within code. And even though it's technically self-created, it doesn't constitute the granting of advance. Um, also I would like to point out there that you could, uh, pick a hedge, um, on Columbia Street. So from the street, it would not be visible and especially since it's on the setback, uh, forty feet from the property line. And there's also a buffer, um, of village property to add to that forty foot. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Um, I just had one comment that we would, you'll need to address before we could actually approve, which is that there are no elevations on the pyramid drawing and since the building butts right up to the pyramid line and the property slopes actually. Um, if you go to the site, we need some spot elevations and the first floor elevation so that the pyramid is tied to actual elevations. So.
Oh, you need to.
Because you've drawn, the, the designer architect has drawn a straight line across for the pyramid to bounce off of. But the property isn't flat like that. There's, it actually slopes south. And it may slope in another direction too. Um, so there, there may be some minor pyramid violation. But we need to prove that, or there isn't. But we just need to prove it, uh, because these are just drawing lines drawn on a paper. They need to be tied to specific spot elevations and a first floor elevation of the building.
Sure. Would we be able to discuss and prove subject to us submitting plans that show that we are not intruding on the pyramid, show the word compliance?
Our attorney is saying no.
They will not. Cause it, it has to be renoticed and everything. We, we should know that before they decide.
Yeah, it may be because.
That is one of the variants.
Right.
But if we. Sure. But if we don't need a variance for the sky plane, then we submit plans showing that we don't need a variant. I mean, I understand we need to renote. We do need a variant for Skyplane, but it's not an issue. And we're in compliance, but we don't know. So like, I don't, I don't know. I.
Typically what we do is we adjourn these so that you can, you can submit a new, because you're going to have to get it resurveyed. That survey is going to have to go out and do spot elevations and the, the, the designer or architect is going to have to do a new drawing of this. So that's going to take, just to get the survey to decide, it'll take weeks.
Yeah, pushing it out another month where if it's not an issue at all and we just submit plans, building department say, oh, we're under the pyramid. It's not an issue. Then we don't have to come back and do all of this all over again if we satisfy the code.
I don't know. What do you think?
I don't have a problem with, with doing that, with giving them an indication.
Okay.
I mean, but I, I would have one question. Is that the type of privet that drops its leaves in the winter?
I think so. No. No.
The homeowner is here and so we would also know. You would know that. It is very.
I mean, the reason that pools, you know, this is a front yard and pools don't want to be visible from the street. Um, in Sag Harbor, that's the reason that, that that's there. Um, so there are some hedges, privets of this type that drop all their leaves and it's completely pretty close to transparent in the winter, but there are some that don't.
I think we would, I'm sorry, but I think we would probably want some more screening around it and probably the Architecture Review Board is going to want more screening around it anyway.
Yeah, it is. Now you can't see through it.
Well, you, I was there today. You can, yeah, you can see through it because I didn't actually have to walk onto the property. I, I did peek down the gate. But you can walk along the property and see right through the hedge. Yeah. So, um, I think that's probably one, one thing that we would want is some more, um, indication of, of vegetation around, uh, at least on the Columbia Street side. I, I don't have a problem with the variances themselves. Uh, and didn't we approve one just like this next door? Yes. So, and, and most of the, um, you know, the structures are be, are behind, you know, sort of the line of the house or.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it. I've said that comment. I'm wanting it.
Yeah.
To be invisible to the street or close to invisible.
Vale, do you have any?
No, I, I think that the it's screened, but to Mr. Mafliars. I think it's like a and was an important consideration. And in terms of what he showed and, um, we look at that on on spot elevation. Yeah. So it's not like we're asking for anything new. It's just that it's part of it to make sure it complies.
And you really just have to do it on the two sides of the building on the property line, you know, every five feet or so. Um, and give us a proposed first floor elevation and then tie it into the pyramid drawings that you've got. Just to make sure that it works.
Yeah, we're having to submit that to the.
So I guess we're also requesting that there's some sort of plan, plan or indication of.
I have to know, like the hedgerow. Um, I'm coming objectionable to lines of. I'm coming objectionable to lines of arbor by the, arbor by the. They look too contrived and they're changing the character of the village, all of these pools, which can be mitigated, but it's the type of planting that is harming the historic district. Because now we've got, there's really, you can't see these beautiful houses to some degree, so. If it's a row of planting behind your existing hedges, not to touch them, but to enhance the screening, that would, that would work.
The other question is, where is the pool equipment? Is that going in the pool house?
Sure, so the pool equipment is going to be located east of the approved pool house, like right up against it within the setback. It's not shown on this survey. We had it added later to the site plan, but that's where it's going to be. So not within the front yard.
Okay, on the east side, so it will meet setback.
Correct.
Okay, because it has to be fifteen feet from property lines. And we would need that shown on the survey also.
Would you, with regard to planting, would the applicant consider an interior of planting around that pool, which may need, it doesn't show the pool fencing here.
Right, well, that's another thing to add. We need the.
Consideration that if you did have low hedges, that the pool's not visible, then you don't have to do a wall of planting on the roadside.
Um, I think that would kind of I think that would break up, honestly, the flow of the backyard and I think that would create a kind of a danger almost if you can't see the pool, you know, if you have people over and kids over and all of a sudden you're
Not between the pool and the house, but towards the roadside view. This is the roadside view. So just to help, if you could shield that pool with very low planting.
Would the board be open to just like maybe a double hedgerow on Columbia Street, so it's still low and we're not creating a wall of arbor by the, but it's just a double hedge?
The design of it is totally up to you. We just, I just think there probably needs to be more screening because you can see through the hedge as it is. And it's not winter. So that's the only, that's the only, you, you can propose what I mean, Val has made a good suggestion, but you can propose whatever you'd like. I think there should just be more screening on Columbia Street.
Your fence, your safety, the door between existing hedge and the new hedge.
So we also need that indicated on here where the pool fences and the gates. Yeah.
Yeah.
So there are actually a number of things that need to be added. I, I think we should adjourn this, not.
Right.
I mean, the indication, Ham, do you?
The only thing I had concern was the accessory structure in the front yard. And it was a studio and I asked the owner, what was the difference now as a studio? What made it a studio? Did he have water running in the area or beds or whatever?
Yeah, no, there's not going to be any beds or any, any plumbing units for his own personal photography use. There's no not going to be used right.
I think a studio is allowed a sink, right?
No.
No?
Six hundred square feet, no plumbing. But if you applied for the accessory structure law, you could have a bathroom. However, there are stipulations which comes with that covenant, which will run with the property.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not proceeding down that avenue.
Damon, do you have any comments?
I, I don't have any angst over any of the, the variance requests at all. Just a pool equipment, you know, need to put that on there, but I don't have any angst over, over what they're trying to do at all.
Great, thank you. No, go ahead.
One, one more attempt to not come back here next month and if the application is I can't, I can't get it done. Okay, I'm sorry, Katie. I wish I could, but I have a big, I already. Plus it's drawn.
Right, right. Yeah. So what, what I'd like to do now is just open up to the public and then you can, you can rebut any comments that are made. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to, where are we?
Thirty-seven John Street.
Thirty-seven John Street. Anyone on Skype out in space? No? Okay, do you have anything else to add before we? Okay, great, thank you. So could I have a motion to adjourn thirty-seven John Street to our October fifteenth meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is one seventy-four Main Street.
Good evening. My name is Scott Sucker. My address is fifty-one O Drive, Sec Harbor, New York.
Great, and are you an attorney?
I am not.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you. You may proceed.
We are here tonight requesting two variances, so one seventy-four Main Street. One is regarding the pyramid code. You're two point seven percent seating. And the other variance we're requesting is we're over the allowable square footage for accessory building. But forty-two square foot. This is an accessory building, which will be the archive building for the historic use. Originally, on, we had it set back a little bit closer to the landscape. Excuse me, the wetland buffer. Where the whaleboat remained in the same spot. And then we went in front of the harbor committee and they suggested that we relocate their proposed archive building farther away from the wetlands buffer. Which then we also had to relocate the whaleboat shop. But really trying to keep everything in place to also not exceed the side yard setbacks.
Great. Do any of the board members have any questions?
I don't, no.
I, we don't normally give variances for, I don't think we ever had for an accessory structure going above six hundred square feet. But I think we could distinguish this because it's not a residence. Without creating a precedent.
I thought it, it would concern. But depending on what they're using it for archives, changes to some extent. But you are opening it.
And it, it's only a seven percent increase, so it's kind of.
Yeah, we just don't want to open the door though, because you know what happens. Everything goes bigger and bigger. We've never, we've never done that, but as long as we can distinguish it based on the function of it. And, and who owns it and operates it. I mean, it's not a residence.
I'd also just, you know, I want to mention that we really did in the zoning, make it as small as we could, where it would still function for us to close the building as far as its historic history.
Great, Damon, do you have any comments?
The only thing I saw was the same thing you just mentioned, which is that the six hundred square foot accessory structure, that was the only thing that I had a concern about.
Great.
I would add that the, a portion of the additional square footage is a bay window. Which is part of, is that the existing structure of the, it's a bay window? Uh, no, the archive, it's a whaleboat shop, so.
Yeah.
So that in itself, that feature is not something, it's not habitable, walkable space, but you're counting that correct to your G F A. It's the, the architect that's correct, roads. I'm, I'm here on, you know, behalf of Craig. He's not able to be here tonight. It's a window seat, which he may have counted towards the extra forty-two square feet.
So we could calculate that square feet and put in our decision that of the extra forty-three square feet, X feet of it, ten feet, whatever it is, consists of a bay window, not usable space.
Almost twenty-four square feet.
Okay.
And the distinction is that this is a museum-type situation versus a residence. So.
Okay, so between those two, I think we could formulate a decision that wouldn't act as precedence for very much.
How many more museums are there in the village where, you know?
Soon come. We have our whaling museum. But let's not go there.
Are there, I can't tell. Is there anyone left? Oh, hello. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to one seventy-four Main Street? No, anyone on Skype? Nobody is left? Okay. Okay, could you state your name and address for the record?
I believe that the bay has archival space. The only way I can describe this.
Oh, on the sides are bookcases. Yeah, there are bookcases. Yeah, so it is, they're using it as base.
It's.
Storage space.
Okay.
If I can just emphasize one thing. We are alone, if we get this time, we'll be the only other museum out here except for Silverstone. Trade Historical Society.
Right.
And it's really, I think we've got everything archivally stored, but it's, you know.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything to add before we, okay, great. So could I have a motion to close the public hearing for one seventy-four Main Street?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Everybody seems in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Ham?
Yes.
I'm in favor.
Yes.
And also crafting our decisions to the extent we can, that it doesn't create a precedent for residential properties within the village.
So could I have a motion to Director to need to write a favorable decision for one seventy-four Main Street to include wording that would limit this to the fact that it's a museum and it's archival storage in an accessory structure? Or a museum use?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you, thank you very much. You too. It's not over yet. Okay, now we have decisions.
Alex just.
Damon, okay. Hi Alex.
Kambari.
Okay, so for Notre Dame Road.
Permission, uh, construction accessory quarters, including seventeen, right, and a pool. Door right in the yard on Sec Harbor Cove. Specifically named benefits allowing structures to be in the front yard for supposed structure activity. And just put the pool down to be twelve point seven feet from the side yard, or fifteen feet is required. Therefore, variance in the amount of two three views necessary. This is a performing lot with respect to lot areas of twenty-three thousand one hundred ninety-two square foot lot, looking at the R twenty zoning, from Sec Harbor Cove. And the pool is going to be constructed within the footprint of existing deck. So twelve point seven foot setback of the deck already exists, thereby minimizing any potential impacts to the branching of those variants. And for the reasons set forth in the new regulations, the board hereby finds that the application is by part test and grants the variances.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for four Notre Dame Road as written?
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Could I have a motion to close the public meeting for the Zoning Board of Appeals, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Be well, bye-bye.